Provided in the following ways, notice published in the Courier News, a notice posted on the Bolton Board of the Municipal Building, notice made available to the township clerk, notice sent to the Courier News and the Star Ledger. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Weissman?
Here.
Mr. Tilery?
Here.
Mr. Patel? Cal Patch?
You see him?
I saw, he's here.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Reggio? Mr. Blount? Mr. Hidaka?
Here.
Mr. Eli?
Here.
Chairman Cahill?
Here. Will everyone please stand to salute the flag?
Oh, nice touch.
The United States of America.
The true republic.
For which it stands. One nation.
Nation. In the God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible and justice for all.
Mr. Caneely, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
I don't see Jim.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I'm going to mute myself and make a phone call.
Please do. I apologize to everyone. First time in the fifteen, sixteen years I've been doing this, but we'll see what's going on with the situation.
He's logging on now, Chairman. It wasn't letting him log on.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, one more minute, please. Thank you.
Maybe he thought he might have found a better gig.
All right, he's signing on as we speak.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know why. The invite went out, but it wasn't letting him open it. So I sent it again.
Okay. Tactical difficulties. Nobody's losing any weight.
That's the worst that happens tonight.
There we go.
There he is.
Can you hear me? I think you're muted, Jim.
There he is.
Certainly. That's not a problem. Do you, do we have any changes to tonight's agenda? I'm not aware of any changes to the agenda. Good, let's proceed. Let's move on to item number five, twenty-two dash ZB dash seventy-nine V, Lily Pham. Is Ms. Pham present?
Yes, I'm here.
I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Where the testimony you're about to give should be the truth.
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Five forty William Street, Piscataway, New Jersey zero eight eight five four.
Thank you. And could you explain to the board what you would like to do here? You can put your hand down.
I'm here to request for the variance. The requires to propose is to thirty foot front yard setback for the patio.
Mr. Chairman, you may want to talk to Mr. Hinterstein about this. Yeah, Henry, you have any comments on this, your side impact?
No, this is strictly for a raised patio. It's a paper street that exists in the back of the house. It actually will have no impact on really anybody other than the paper street. And that paper street is encumbered by wetlands for the most part. So I don't anticipate it ever being developed into a road. So for that reason, I don't see any issues with this application.
Thank you, Henry. Any other members of the board have any questions for this applicant, this application? Hearing none, I'm going to open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any comments or questions about this application? Ms. Buckley?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion. I make a motion to approve this application. Can I get a second?
I have a second. Thank you.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tilery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Eli?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes. Your application's been approved. We'll memorialize it at our next meeting in a written document and mail that document to you. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Good luck, man. Let's move on to item number six, twenty-two dash ZB dash eighty-one V, Mark and Danielle Sakitis. Are Mark and Danielle Sakitis present?
Yes, we are.
Okay, I need to swear you in. Could you each raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth, so you got it.
Yes, I do.
I do.
Okay, your address, please?
Two Underwood Street, Piscataway, New Jersey zero eight eight five four.
And could you explain to the board what you would like to do here?
I'd like to install a shed in the back of my house.
Mr. Chairman, it appears that most of these variances are existing.
Existing, yeah, I saw that.
With Mr. Hinterstein. Henry, do you have any comments on this application?
There's only, the only comment is it appears that the deck was constructed without a variance and a permit previously. The variance required for the, for the deck seems reasonable concerning this as a corner property. That being said, approvals given, I think it should be subject upon building permits being secured or proof that a building permit was ever taken out for the, for the deck. And this way we could confirm that the deck was built in accordance with building codes. Other than that, I don't see any issues with this application.
Thank you, Henry. Mr. Sakitis, are you okay with that?
Yes, I am. I do have a question, though. The deck was built, you know, around thirty years ago. We moved into the house in September nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three. And then in ninety-four, we had the deck built. I did have, you know, permits. We couldn't build the deck unless we had a permit from the township. But unfortunately, I can't find that permit or even the contractor's name who did it thirty years ago. So what is the next step, you know, to secure, you know, the deck is reviewed again? Do we have to file for a permit for the deck or another variance?
Yeah, I believe you're going to have, well, you're getting the variance for the deck now. And the reason I'm saying I believe it was built without permits or variances is because if you would have went for a permit, what would have happened is it would have triggered a variance. Your zoning permit would have got denied at that point, just like your shed permit got denied.
Okay.
And we would have said you needed a variance. So perhaps you took out, or your contractor said he took out the permits. Whatever happened, happened. I don't believe a permit was secured. You could always inquire with the building department whether or not that's the case or not, or if they have records for, for a permit. But if not, you would be required to just fill out the building permit. You may have to give them a sketch of what was constructed. And pretty much just get the permit. They'll come out, do some inspections of the deck to see if it seems that it was constructed properly. But you could reach out to the building department once you have your resolution and they could, or even sooner, and they could sort of guide you on what you're going to need. Just let them know as condition of your approval that you're required to get a building permit for a deck that was constructed quite some time ago.
Okay, thank you, Henry.
So are we, are we on hold for the shed? We can't put the, we can't do the shed until we get the, the deck squared away?
Well, you need to at least apply for the permit. So you could show us proof that you've applied to the permit, for the permit, for the deck. Even if it takes a little while to get that permit and the inspection work, we'll, we'll allow for the shed zoning permit to be approved once we see that you applied for the deck and this resolution's been adopted. So that's going to take, I believe, to the next meeting in November before you're going to have an adopted resolution for the shed anyway. So in the meantime, you might want to get that in the works to try to get, see what you're going to need for that building permit for the deck. This way, once you have your resolution, you might be ready to rock and roll with the shed.
Okay, so now when you said that the, that the permit would trigger the variance, is, is that what's going to happen? We, we apply first for a permit and then it triggers a variance for the deck?
Well, you're getting, you're, that's what normally would happen, but you're getting the variance now.
Oh, with the shed?
Yes.
Okay.
It's due for Tuesday.
Thank you.
It's due for Thursday. Yeah, I think, I think you're in good shape, Sakitis. Any other members of the board have any questions for this applicant? Hearing none, I'm going to open the public portion. Anyone in the public have any comments or questions for this application?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion and I make a motion to approve this application?
I'll say them.
Thank you, sir. With the conditions set aside by Mr. Hinterstein, sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tilery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Eli?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes. Your application's been approved with some conditions. We'll memorialize it at our next meeting and mail a copy of that document to you. You'll need that to get your permits.
Okay, great, thank you. And thank you, Laura, for all your help.
You're very welcome, Eddie.
Yeah, she's the best. Good luck, guys. Let's move on to item number seven, twenty-two dash ZB dash thirty-eight V, Lori Sempravive? Did I bring that?
Sempravive.
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 Is Mr. Sullivan present?
Good evening, John. Yes, I am. John Sullivan from the offices of Bastola and Sullivan, representing the applicant.
Good evening.
We were last here back on August eleventh. And at that time, we had presented the testimony of Ms. Sempravive's husband, Kevin. And we submitted a number of documents in support of the application, which is for a certificate of non-conformity for a two-family dwelling. Just to quickly summarize what we had submitted, we had submitted the survey showing that there was attic parking for a two-family home. We showed the floor plans, which showed the interior layout of the property. We introduced some site photographs showing that there were two units with separate entrances, mailbox utilities and utility meters. We had submitted construction records indicating that permits for two water heaters and two air conditioning units were issued for the property. And we had some tax records showing that the property was built in nineteen ninety, or I'm sorry, nineteen nineteen, and was listed as a two-family dwelling. Mr. Sempravive testified as to his background in construction and his opinion that this was a longstanding two-family home based on the way it was constructed. Towards the end of the hearing, Mr. Hinterstein had suggested that we needed to get a little more. So we did go out in between last meeting and now, we were able to obtain some additional property tax cards. We had five of those. Two thousand twenty-one is the most recent and nineteen fifty-six was the earliest that we could find. Those cards, each of those cards do show that the property was listed as a two-family dwelling from nineteen fifty-six to the present. So that, that's really the only additional evidence that we have in addition to what we spoke about at the last meeting.
And those property record cards have been distributed to the board members for your consideration. Mr. Chairman, if the board has any questions, they can ask now. You may want to open it to the public. Okay. Henry, do you have any comments or questions, Hen?
I do not. I think the tax cards that were submitted that take this back to nineteen fifty-six as a two-family, I think it gets you close enough where I think you can make the reasonable assumption that this has been a longstanding two-family property to the time probably before zoning took place. So I think, I think we're close enough.
Okay. Any other members of the board have any questions for this application or comments? Hearing none, I'm going to open the, the public. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments for this application? Ms. Buckley?
No one's raising their hand, Chairman.
Okay. Close the public portion and I'd make a motion to approve the application based on the new evidence that was put forth tonight.
I have a second.
Let's call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tilery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes. We will memorialize this resolution at our next meeting and mail a copy to you.
Thank you.
Good night, sir. Let's move on to item number eight, twenty-two dash ZB dash twenty-one V, Calvin Samra? Is Calvin Samra present? Calvin, you're muted. There you go, buddy. Could you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth.
Yes, sir.
Your, your name and address, please?
Calvin Samra, eighteen oh seven West Fifth Street, Piscataway, New Jersey zero eight eight five four.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board what you'd like to do here?
Yes, my, I apply for a construct, a two-story addition and a roof over my front porch. Also a privacy fence.
Mr. Chairman, you may want to talk to Mr. Hinterstein about his report. Absolutely. Henry, any comments on this? You're muted, Hen.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I mean, this, the report talks about a couple of things. The first being that the, obviously the coverage variance that we're going for here is quite extreme. The, the variance request is for twenty-eight point one-five percent, considering only twenty percent is allowed. So, you know, that I think is the, the main and the, the most extreme issue here that I think we need to discuss. I also feel that the fence, again, the fence is shown, I think, in the front yard setback. I think it needs to be adjusted and moved back a little bit. I think my suggestion is that the fence be moved back so that it's about one section further back on the sides and moved eight feet further back from its existing location. So it doesn't affect the site corridor of the street and impact the neighboring properties, driveways and visibility on the street. The, a couple of other items, I don't, I don't think the survey accurately depicts the existing front stoop and stairs. I don't know if it's been changed or if the permit was issued for that to be changed since the survey was done. But that doesn't, that's not what the stairs look like today. So I'm not sure how, how accurate this is. I think you may need to update the survey. And then the existing shed appears larger than what's also depicted on the survey. So, I mean, there's a lot of issues. One, one of them is that, you know, the survey's not accurate. So with, with that being said, I can't really, you know, I'm basing this, the zoning officer's basing this off of certain things that may or may not be true. Again, that frame shed does not appear to be that size. The, you know, the stairs don't seem to be completely correct. Right now, there's a stupid stair. So again, I think what we need to do is update this survey. And I think the applicant, you know, if, you know, wants to work with the town, my suggestion would be is that they, they go back, they see perhaps if there's, there's, you know, the ten by ten canopies, there's the shed, there's a couple accessory structures on the property that they may be able to get rid of in order to get the, you know, the coverage variance to a manageable, a manageable amount. But, you know, at twenty-eight percent, you know, as you know, Mr. Chairman, we, we usually don't look at coverage variances. You know, we usually like to try to keep them closer to, you know, twenty-three percent, really below that.
I was going to say even sure.
So, you know, I think you need to try to figure out what's important to you. Is it the addition, the living space in the home? Is it the shed? Is it the canopy out there that you have? I mean, but I think something's got to be revised to get you down to a more manageable percentage of coverage that you have on this property. And I think you may need to figure out, and it could be something that you figure out, is whether or not the survey is accurate. And if it's not accurate, provide us with the dimensions of the shed and the stoop and draw it in on a, on a revised plan so that we know exactly what the setbacks are and what the coverage variance is that exists out there now.
Okay. Mr. Samra, do you understand what we're, we're going with this?
Right, as of my knowledge, everything was updated recently. Everything's up to spec. The only thing that I was added was the fence setback, which I could remove. So the canopies are ten by ten, I could remove that, that's not a problem. But the swing set, I have a swing set for the kids in the yard, which is like a ten-foot. And I have, you know, three kids. You know, I'm going to keep it forever, you know? Four or five years, the kids get big, I'm going to get rid of it, you know? But the only thing, I will remove the fence, I'll put it back to the correct spot. And also, if you guys want me to remove the, the canopy, I will do that. But everything else is accurate as of now.
Well, what about the dimensions on the shed?
They said, yes, yeah.
Mr. Hinterstein said that the, the proposed information that you gave us is not accurate to what's currently out there.
But whatever I write there, that's why I measure, you know, when I bought a house. So whatever is there, that's why I mentioned for the plan also for the survey. So everything was updated last month. I put new survey, I did everything over again, it's like the second time. Everything buys the, the drawings, everything was revised and, and resubmitted. So the only problem is, if you guys want me to remove the canopy, I will do that. Also remove the fence as of tomorrow and I will setback everything and we could power. Because as of now, my best interest is for the addition because I have three kids and a family and the only space I have is the two bedrooms.
Laura, do you show anything that was submitted recently by this applicant? Anything, any changes or revisions? Sorry.
That was when he was deemed complete. That was the last time he gave us revised.
Okay, Henry, those are the same revised, just one second. Henry, those are the same revised that we're having a problem with?
Yeah, I don't have anything other than the plan that I think everybody has in front of them, correct, Laura?
Correct.
So.
Mr. Samra, I think, I think we should regroup and you should resubmit new paperwork and, and call our zoning department. Call Henry or Dawn and, and they can work with you as to what we're looking for as the township and what you're looking for as a resident. And we'll come to a, we'll, we'll come to some common ground. That's what we want to do.
Mr. Samra, if I, if I may, too, if you have a roof structure over, like on your survey, it says there's some pavers next to the shed. If you put a roof connected to the shed and even if it's over the pavers, then it, it's sort of acting as a, a structure again. So you can't have, you know, a makeshift roof over, you know, a concrete surface or paver surface that you're storing stuff in. Because again, that is considered then a shed type structure and it, it needs to be depicted. So if you have a roof over anything, maybe that's what it is. Maybe the shed is accurate, but perhaps you have other stuff connected to the shed that needs to be removed. But, you know, I'm just, just looking at this. If you remove the canopy, that's, that's a hundred square feet. I'm, I'm looking at the size of your property. Your property's fifty-five forty-nine square feet. So, you know, you're going to still be shy of two percent that, that you're removing, even if you took out that canopy, which is going to bring you to, you know, you're still going to be over twenty-six percent. So I still think you might have to look at the addition and you might have to tweak it a little bit, you know? Yeah, I, you know, I really think you're going to have to, I know it's a really undersized lot. You're sort of pinched for space. But again, and, and the swing set, I don't believe was even calculated into this calculation. We, we don't look at, I don't think, the swing sets as a building coverage. So we're really just looking at the structures that you have on your, your property. And again, with the canopy being removed, I still think you're going to be over twenty-six percent. You might want to see if there's something you could do to maybe revise this to get this at least closer to twenty-five is, is my, my opinion of where you're probably going to have to be. So maybe look at the size and how the addition is laid out and see maybe if you could, you know, somehow pick up another, some other square footage to reduce this and get it at least into the twenty-five range.
Right, so, um, that's not a problem. I have a shed, existent shed, which is, is ten by fourteen. It's already existed when I bought a house, two thousand sixteen. That I could remove to a smaller amount. And that's the only option, that's only a last option I have.
Okay. I think what you need to do is work this out, revise your plan of what you're going to propose so that we could see the numbers and what it comes to. Instead of trying to do this here at the meeting.
All right.
Submit a revised plan so we could calculate and confirm that, you know, what your coverage is going to be and that you're willing to relocate the fence and everything. And then I think maybe it's, you know, we, like, like Mr. Chairman said, Mr. Cahill said, we could regroup here perhaps at the next meeting and, or the, the following meeting, whatever works. Because I know the next meeting is a little tight. And then hopefully we can get you an approval that night if the revised plan looks good.
Okay, no problem. We'll do that, we'll do that.
Thank you, Mr. Samra. I think, and quite honestly, twenty-five percent is very generous as well. Like we said earlier, it's twenty-two to twenty-three percent normally when we, we work with our guidelines. But if Henry's comfortable with twenty-five, that's great. And don't be afraid to pick up the phone and call Henry or Dawn or anybody down there to work with you to, so we can come up with some, you know, common ground. So Laura, we have any room on the next meeting? Yeah, I know, I'm the one who's going to be here.
I don't think you could get revised plans in here.
That's something, yeah, time-wise, it's not going to work. It's not going to be, I mean, the next one's December eighth. You'd have more time to get everything prepared for that one.
For that one. Are you okay, Mr. Samra, December eighth?
Yeah.
And I'll email you all your Zoom information and all that. Your notices are good, so.
Okay.
So anybody here on the Samra application, it's being adjourned to December eighth with no further notice?
Correct.
All right, thank you, Mr. Samra. We'll see you in about a month.
Okay, no problem.
Have a good night as well. Let's move on to item number nine, twenty-two dash ZB dash seventy-six V, Canberra Pharmaceuticals?
Yes, Dimitri Shelho from Bergman Cepeda, LP twenty-five, Hanover Road, Florham Park, New Jersey zero seven nine three two, on behalf of Canberra Pharmaceuticals, eight hundred Centennial Avenue, Suite One, Piscataway, New Jersey zero eight eight five four.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Please proceed.
So we have application for variance, which calls for four signs on the sides of the commercial building, which is leased by Canberra Pharmaceuticals, that occupy part of the building, but a substantial part. So the building is located at the address that I just named. I understand from the documents in front of me that there's a main objection from Mr. Hinterstein, landscape architect. And maybe if I can share the screen, we can all see it. Permission to share a screen? I have a, I have letter on the screen.
Please do.
You could share it.
Okay. Okay, can you see it?
Yes, we can see it and all of the members have that report as well.
Okay, great. So, um, so from this letter, we understand that the site impact has four points, but the first one, Aldra's the first one, which basically says that we ask, we asking for, Canberra's asking for four signs and that seems to be excessive. And why do we need four signs where just maybe one or two could be sufficient? And why do we need four signs where just maybe one or two could be sufficient? So, um, I'll, I'll explain why. Um, so this screen shows you where the signs are supposed to be placed. And none of them are present right now. So we, we're looking to place four signs. And they will be placed in different locations on the building. The ones which are placed at the corner of the building, um, they will be placed above the doors. But they will be obscured from the road by the couple of pine trees here. The reason for the science to begin with is so that the trucks which come in can quickly locate the building. Pull up to the loading dock, unload or, or, or load and leave quickly. Um, and right now what they're doing is they're missing the building because they cannot see the sign. So these two signs will be obscured and that's why we need to, uh, to additional signs. Um, and to additional signs are gonna look like this also on the side of the building. And I have a picture from the top. This is the building from the top. This is Google Earth view. So you see that, um, how the signs are gonna be placed. So the two signs which are gonna be obscured are here at the corner. And obscured by these trees and the additional signs you want are right here and about the middle of the building on the side. Canberra does not occupy the whole building. So, but the placement of these signs is going to make sure that the, the drivers can clearly see. From all adjacent roads, um, when approaching, they could see where the loading docks are. Um, and that's another picture how it's gonna look. This, the sign is gonna be the Canberra sign. Uh, let me see if I have a bigger one. I can make it larger. It's just gonna be the name of the company, Canberra Pharmaceuticals, gonna look like this. And the signs are gonna be placed above the doors. Um, one thing is that they have a sign, uh, a plan above an emergency door or they have one already there. And this causes a confusion because people just come to that emergency door and they're not supposed to because the emergency door is supposed to be unblocked. And with easy access to it. And so people get confused, where is it? They're coming. They're supposed to be coming to the office. And seeing reception is there and the truck drivers are supposed to be coming to the loading docks and unloading their stuff. So all in all, I think that, that's why we argue that we need these four signs. They are not, um, I think they're appropriate size. And, um, that's the, um, that's what we have to say about the, um, the first point. I can stop here, um, and, 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 um. And hear what, um, what the board has to say about that.
Now, why don't you go on through the rest of the report if you have any comments?
So, um, the second point is multi-use path. Um, which I understand to be, um, uh, sort of a, an access element. It's, it's, it's a paved park. Where pedestrians are supposed to go. You may have some decorative elements. And, um, the thing is that Canberra Pharmaceuticals are not owners of the building. They, they are leases. So perhaps the owner of the building is the one who should, um. Who should really take care of this, um, multi-use, uh, path. But even aside from this, uh, I understand that it's this multi-use path seems to be something like a future old improvements. So it's not, it's not in an, in an immediate, uh, need. It's not what we're really asking for. What we're asking for are signs. On the side of the building, which, you know, have nothing to do either as roadway, always this multi-use path. That's why we don't quite understand why, why is the site impact. Uh, here because, you know, signs on the side of the building cannot affect in any way the, the roads. Uh, or pedestrians wa- walking on this multi-use path. So we're gonna seek some clarification here from the board. As to this, uh, point number two. Uh, point number three, any dead and missing landscaping from the site? Well, um, I understand the site is, is, uh, is fine with respect to what is adjacent to the building, but. If, if some improvements I needed there to make it look better, then I suppose the owner of the building can do that. Um, and number four is document required to be submitted. That's I guess covers points one to three.
Uh, Henry? You wanna take the sun?
Well, uh, let's go back to one since that's the, the first item and also I guess what the, uh. The gist of the, the application is, but again, um, and, and I think his, his. Exhibit really sort of. Um, confirms the fact that I, I don't feel two signs are necessary on both facades, uh. Um, there's no doubt. That there's a little bit of perhaps, um. Some visibility issues when you're going west on Centennial Avenue. That perhaps you don't see, you know, a sign that may be, you know, smack up on each corner. But I, I, you know, I, I think on Plainfield Avenue North, um. They could definitely suffice with one sign. Uh, it could be centrally located on the building. It doesn't have to be on each corner. Uh, the majority of the traffic coming to this site is coming from Centennial Avenue. Plainfield Avenue North is, uh, more of a residential street that leads to residential development. Um, I don't believe it even allows for, uh, truck traffic. Um, to go down it beyond this, uh, beyond this building. So again, I, I, I think if there was, I think a, a good compromise for the signage would be. I don't have really an issue with the two signs on Centennial Avenue as it's more of an industrial corridor. Um, there's a little bit of a space between the two, uh, locations. Again. I still think there probably could be one centrally located sign here, but. I mean, I think it's a case of how many signs is enough. I, I really just don't think. Uh, there's probably one door that gets used on that building, uh, and I understand the, um. The signage is more for deliveries, but I think nowadays with GPS, everybody knows exactly where they're going. Um, really one sign on each facade would be enough, but. I'm willing to make a concession and I think in the spirit of compromise. I think we could live with the two signs on Centennial Avenue and, uh, and then they should, I think, compromise and. Provide simply one side on, uh, Plainfield Avenue North. That would be my recommendation. And as, as far as the mop and the landscaping, um, you know, I'm not in total disagreement that perhaps this, you know, I'm not saying who's responsible. Um, if it's the owner, but the owner is basically akin to this application. Um, they own the building. They're giving you permission to put signs on the building, so, uh, Mr. Canily could probably. You know, address that a little bit more, but, um, you know, maybe you need to, um. You know, work that out with the owner, uh, or talk to the owner before we move forward. Um, to see if they're even be willing to take that on, but, uh, you know. Um, again, they're somewhat akin to the application by signing off as the owner of this property to allow you to put the signs on the building. So, uh, in that regard, uh, it, it is somewhat related, relatable.
And if the board is inclined to make those, uh, two items a condition of approval. I would recommend that you make, uh, the condition that either the owner or the applicant comply with paragraphs two and three of Henry's report. Any other members of the board? I'm sorry?
Yeah, ca- can the board please explain the connection between having signs on the side of the building? And having the multi-use path, which is outside of the building and has not much to do with the signs?
There re- there really is no connect. This is John Chadwick. There really is no connection. The multi-use pass is part of the planning process for this whole industrial area. Of which this lot is a part of and was a origin, part of the original approval. So the, the improvement is part of the. Neighborhood or industrial scheme for development. It's nothing to do with your signs. You trigger it by making the application.
Okay, um, what about the fact that right now large trucks are missing the building? Or missing the loading docks and have to go past that inadvertently and then have to turn around. And make a large detour in the process, basically stewing all these gases, making noises. Um, I mean, is it really good to have that?
Is, is that what you's, isn't that what your signs are all about?
They are, but they, if, if you conditioning the placement of the signs with the improvements. I'm just not sure when those landscaping improvements can be made and how long that's gonna take in, in the mean.
You heard, you heard, you heard, Mr. Canily. We have these types of applications with major tenant. Who does not own the building all the time. And the actions of the board is to. Either have the app, the applicant do it or work with his landlord and get it done. If there's a, no compromise, it can be done, then you'll come back and discuss it with us.
Hmm, so right now the compromise is two signs and this landscaping.
No.
No, three signs. Field, two on Centennial. The mop and the landscaping.
Alright, um, is it okay if I give a chance to the, um. Mister Ronald Serminaro to, but who is VP of Commercial Strategy and Operations for Canberra to. Um, see if he has a couple of words to say. He is present here.
If you wanna call a witness, you can certainly call a witness.
Yes, um, calling Mister Ronald Serminaro. Ron, do you wanna say a couple of words about this?
Okay, I need to swear him in. Is it Mister Seminero?
Yes.
Mister Seminero, are you present?
I am.
I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand?
It's risen.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name and address, please?
Yes, um, my name is Ron Serminero. I live at seven Buffer Drive in Somerset, New Jersey, zero eight eight seven three.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, just a couple of thoughts here, um, the, um. As far as the one sign on the. Plainfield Avenue North side. Uh, the, the concern that we have with putting one sign in the middle is that. There is a, an, an emergency exit door that is just a door and, and a set of stairs right there, right over that. So the sign work. Directs people once they're on the property to how they get into the building and we have. Our main entrance is at the corner where we have a foyer and a, and a receptionist. This, um, emergency door is not, uh, not manned. There's no one there. People are gonna be knocking on the door. It's gonna disrupt our business. And, and, you know, that's, I think, a pu- putting a sign directly in the middle is going to be. A counterproductive to what a sign is supposed to do. Um, as far as the road is concerned, we have no neighbors that have visibility to that side of the building whatsoever. Uh, Plainfield Avenue North has a tree line there that totally obscures. The other industrial building across the street and parking lot. From our, the, our view and would obscure their view of our building as well. So I don't think there's any visual impact. Sign at the end of our building and one over our door so that. The one on the end would actually direct people onto the property. And the one, when they're looking for somebody to go to the office, they would see the sign over our, our doors so they know where to go. To get into our building. I think it's, it's just, you know, what we're looking to do as far as, uh, a smooth operation of our business. Um. The other question that I had was not point number three. Uh, do we know if there is any dead or missing landscape? How would we find out? What was agreed to in the redevelopment plan, uh, that our, that our landlord should be taking care of? Uh, that's the only other question I have right now.
Well, as far as the dead and missing landscape, I think it'd be pretty apparent because it's. Was in pretty good shape not that long ago. So anything that's dead is probably still there right now and it's dead and. Um, to be honest with you, it's probably predominantly evergreen material, uh, if it's passed. And, um, I think it'd be pretty, pretty obvious. Uh, but again, that's something you need to work out with the owner and the owner really, you know, between, if, if you're gonna take that on, I'd be more than happy to. To work with you on that, um, but, um, you know, I don't know exactly what is dead at this current time. Um, but I'm pretty sure that there's some dead evergreens from, from doing the inspection here that I did see some dead material on the site. Um, again, I don't think it was anything substantial, um, but there, there's probably some dead. Uh, material, not so much missing, uh, unless the landscaper had, had taken it out. And in that case, I think you would see the evidence of a, of a mulch bed or the, you know, mulch tree ring or something. Or stump or something that is evident that something was removed because it was dead and it wasn't replaced. Uh, so that would be the answer to the, uh, to the landscaping question. Again, I still don't agree with you, your take on the sign issue. I'm gonna have to, uh, disagree with you on that, um. You know, your whole point was is that you can't see the sign coming down from, from, um. From Centennial. Well, you could see it if it's further down that building. Now, a sign that's forty feet up in the air, in my opinion, doesn't direct you to any kind of doorways, uh, especially if they're just on the corners or. Uh, of the building. I don't think anybody's gonna mistake, um, entrances. I think to, to handle that, what you need to do is perhaps. Put the right. Signage or labels on the doors.
Absolutely.
Exit, you know, main entrance, whatever that case may be. None of those signs say entrance. So if you have four signs, I just don't see how that directs you any better to your front door than. Then the opposite, you know, having less signage or having a sign in the center of the, of the property that the trucks could still see. Coming down Centennial. Again, there's an ordinance for a reason so that we're not inundated with unnecessary signage. Um, again, I think it may be more of a communication, perhaps that you need to. Or the company needs to communicate with the delivery drivers a little bit better stating that, hey, our entrance for deliveries is off of Plainfield Avenue North. I think it's as simple as that. You're the, you're on that corner. Once you turn on Plainfield Avenue North. Which I would imagine is the way that anybody's coming, uh, if they're coming from. You know, that side of Centennial Avenue, uh, if they're coming from the opposite end of Centennial Avenue, from the River Road area. Then the sign, both signs in Centennial Avenue would be visible. So, I mean, you could also direct, um. You know, how, you know, what exit people used to get to your site. So I think a lot of that is, I, I think a little bit of, uh. Communication and, and maybe, um, you know, letting the companies and the drivers know the best way to, um. Get to your site, best, you know, where, where the loading docks are or for what, what entrance you wanted to come into, if there is a specific area. But again, just to, to oversign the building, uh, with, you know, these large signs. Uh, I, I just think, you know, I, I just don't see the, uh, the hardship, um, because, you know, maybe one driver. Who isn't paying attention, um, can't find, uh, you know. Eight hundred Centennial Avenue, which I find hard to believe.
Hmm, sure. So when they're, when they're coming up from, uh, exit nine off of two eighty-seven, traveling. Looks like north to me, um, the one sign is downstream. Uh, and one sign on the corner, if they, if there's only a sign on the corner, uh, they've gotta make that jug handle in because that's the truck entrance to get onto. Plainfield North and then, and then make their turn into our, our plant. Uh, so that, that sign downstream would, would be very helpful there to give them a little heads up to make sure they're in the right lane. They can make that jug handle. So I, I appreciate you, you, uh, authorizing that. Uh, coming the other way, I think most people would come off of two eighty-seven, exit, uh, eight and then coming back towards it. Um, it, it is, uh, nearly impossible to see now. You know, you, you, you said the signs are big and they're, and they're on the building, but there is, uh, an island of, of land. That is on that corner, which is where, where, where houses those, uh, those trees. And then there's additional land, um, and, and it's a detention, uh, basin. And then there's a parking lot and then there's the, the building. So the building is set back quite a ways from the road. It's not like the building is right on the street. And that these signs are gonna be, you know, blaring at people, uh, you know, eighteen point five feet. Uh, by eight feet and there's, you know, there's gonna be in people's faces. They're gonna be pretty well set back and pretty well, um, you know. Melded into the entire environment. Um, so, you know, I appreciate your position. Um, you know, I, 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 you know, respectfully disagree with it from what we have seen from operations. We've been there for, you know, uh, operating our warehouse for over a year now at this point. And, you know, we do have a warehouse down the street at the ten thirty-one as well. So we do, uh, quite a bit of, uh, you know, paying, um, leases and taxes from that and, you know, we would, we would have hoped that. We could get this through, but, uh, if, if that's your opinion, that's, we have to. Uh, if if that's your opinion, that's we have to respect that at this point.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the board have any questions or comments? Um, hearing none? Is there any other witnesses that you're all gonna put up tonight, sir?
No, no, I have a witness, thank you.
Okay, so Henry, just lay it out one more time exactly where we're at, we're at three signs, one on Plainfield, two on Centennial. Um. The condition of of approval would include the the um, multi-use path? And then the um, the replanting of missing or dead landscape, is that correct?
I believe so.
Yes. Okay.
Let me, let me ask just one more question.
Please.
Have that multi-use path completed, or is it or is it something that they have to. Uh, begin applying for a permit to do? And and what exactly does that entail, is that is the pavement, is it cement, what what is the the multi-path? Uh, so I can speak with the um, you know, the agent that manages the property so we can get that started, what what is it that has to be done there?
My understanding is it's a nine-foot paved path of my. From what my recollection is, is probably two to three inches uh, of blacktop. But I can't confirm that, I don't I don't have the plans in front of me from what I recall seeing. Uh, but it's blacktop over a stone base approximately nine feet wide, that's really all I could, um. You know, speak of.
Okay, uh, can I come down to the township uh, municipal building and get the plans or or requirements for that?
Yeah, I'm sure if you come down or if you email Laura. She could probably uh, give you the proper email address for Joe Herrera, who's supervisor of engineering. And he could probably get you the the plan uh, for that mop or the information that you need for.
Okay, I'll I'll call Laura, okay, thank you very much.
This Mister Chairman, you might want to clear up that one sign on on uh, Plainfield North. Uh, they kind of objected to have it in the middle and it probably makes sense, put it back on the back corner. Or you want to leave it in the middle?
Yeah, Henry, the far left corner where they originally had.
I don't, yeah, I don't really care where they where they put it on that side, I just think there's, you know. Uh, I think it should be placed where it could be seen, um, again.
Right, not block.
Put it in a corner and it can't be seen, then what's the point of that sign anyway? So, um, again, it should be slid back as if they want to slide it all the way back to the back corner, because that's where the deliveries are. Then maybe that's the 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 location that makes the most sense. Um, I was trying to move it to the middle so that it might be a little bit more visible from Centennial Avenue. Um, and once they're directed, you know, again, you're allowed to have a directional signage on the property. Which is small in nature, ten square feet, so you could add small directional signage. Uh, that's at least ten feet off the right of way line, perhaps at that entranceway, so once a truck pulls into the. To the site, you could direct them with directional signage exactly where they need to go, um, that could be at, you know. Both driveways at on the property, you know, deliveries this way, stray camber deliveries. Uh, as long as that sign, I believe, is ten square feet or less, I think that might be a good solution to place them. Uh, at the driveways and you could direct them exactly, you know, within the site as to where the delivery should be taken.
Okay, thank you, Henry. Any other members have, any other members of the board have any questions? Um, hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the public, anyone in the public, can you, um, Mister Dimitri, can you take the um. Site impact down off the screen, please, the shared screen? Thank you. I'm gonna open this uh, application up to the public, anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public portion and I will make a motion to approve the.
Wait, I'm sorry, as a member of the public, I have a question.
Oh.
When is the?
Hold on, sir, hold on, uh, you need to identify yourself, please?
Uh, John Thaler, I work at Camber.
Okay, I need to swear you in, could you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes. I just want. Centennial Avenue and when is the, when is that supposed to be repaved and I know there's a lot of work planned on redoing that road, it's a. It's a really bad road at the existing time, and I think that's when the um, the the path is going to be installed. Could you update us on the uh, redoing uh, Centennial Avenue?
I believe you'd have to contact the Department of Public Works for the township, I don't think anyone on this board has that information.
Engineering, Mister.
Engineering, sorry.
Engineering, yeah, and somebody asked a few months ago, it's on the list, they're waiting for different approvals. I don't, we don't have a timeframe yet, but it is on the list to get done, that that's what I was told.
Okay, I mean, that road's been in bad condition for years now.
You could call engineering tomorrow and ask for Joe Herrera.
Okay, but how does that affect the uh, that path that you're talking about? Because that won't be done until the road is done.
Not not true.
Why'd you say that?
Because you could put the path in, if it's in the plan, then the path can go in before the road gets done if. The road's not going to impact that location, um. It's.
I'm not sure that that's true based on the fact.
The path is off the roadway.
Um, but they're they're widening the road though, is that is not.
Not, I don't believe it's being widened in your location.
Okay, uh, okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public? No one, Laura?
One again, thank you.
Okay, no problem, close the public portion, I'd make a motion to approve this application with the conditions set forth on the site impact by Henry.
I have a second.
Thank you, I'm gonna call.
Mister Weissman?
Yes.
Mister Tillery?
Yes.
Mister Patel?
Yes.
Mister Reggio?
Yes.
Mister Blount? That's all I'm gonna do, Mister Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Uh, your application has been uh, approved as amended by the board with conditions, we will memorialize it at our next meeting and send a copy to you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you very much.
Good night, gentlemen.
Good night.
Let's, let's move on to item number ten, twenty-two dash ZB dash seventy-two slash seventy-three V. Scholz Electric and Communications.
Uh, thank you, members of the board and uh, board professionals, my name is Tim Arch. I'm an attorney licensed in the state of New Jersey, I'm here representing Scholz Electric and Communications. Um, we're here tonight looking for preliminary and final uh, site plan with bulk and um, D variances for. Um, a modest expansion of the existing uh, building, it's approximately a six thousand square foot. Um, expansion to the existing building, uh, but that's not actually why we're in front of the zoning board, because if it was just that, I believe we would be in front of the planning board, we're also. Proposing um, some solar ground arrays and uh, because of uh, because they don't meet all of the conditions. Um, of a conditional use standard, that's why we're in front of the zoning board, so it's actually the solar arrays that. Triggered us in front of you fine folk, not the uh, not the expansion. Um, I do have three witnesses uh, tonight, um, uh, which we'll go through uh, probably in fairly quick fashion. Um, but just for housekeeping purposes, I do want to indicate that we have Mister Chadwick's report uh, of October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. And Mister Hinterstein's report of October twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, as well as the zoning letter from uh, from Dawn indicating the requested variances. I would just ask, are there any other reports that we were not um, in possession of?
Nope.
No, I don't think so.
Thank you so much, um, so uh, I'm gonna call my first witness now, uh, who would be Mister Ed Welsh, who I believe is present.
Present.
Mister Welsh, I need to swear you in, could you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, Mister Welsh, uh, can you tell us what is your title or position with Scholz?
Yeah, I'm the president of Scholz, I'm the president and one of the owners.
Okay, uh, how long has uh, has Scholz been here in Piscataway?
Uh, longer than my time, uh, twenty plus years.
Okay, um, and just briefly, if you can tell us, what is it that Scholz do does at that location, what's your business?
Um, we're a commercial electrical and low voltage contractor, we're a union contractor, we work throughout New Jersey, we do. Hospitals, data centers, schools, um, commercial work, uh. All sorts of different like large uh, electrical construction projects.
Excellent, okay, so we're asking uh, tonight, uh, one of the things we're asking for is approximately a six thousand square foot expansion, can you let the board know? What is it that you're gonna use that expansion for, why is it that we're asking for?
Um, a couple of years ago, we started doing some light assembly in our warehouse, um. And we're a little cramped in there, we're trying to do a little more, you know, we've we've, we've made the best use of our existing warehouses we can. Um, we have a few guys working in there and basically what they're doing is putting things together, assembling things that we would often do out in the field. Um, so it winds up being more efficient, uh. It's a nicer place to work, you know, especially in the winter or the summer and depending on the conditions and and it winds up being more efficient, so um. It's something that we're already doing, but but having a little more space would let us be to do it a little bit better, because now oftentimes, depending on what's required. They have to move things around and reroute things a little bit, so uh, you know, the added space would would allow us that.
So, so, so basically, uh, if if I can just paraphrase. You're doing some existing, I guess, uh, assembly, but you're doing those sort of off-site or in the field that you'd now be able to do. In the sort of more controlled environment, correct?
Yes, yeah, we do a little bit in our warehouse now, this would allow us to do some more.
Perfect, okay, um, now, as part of the expansion, we're also asking for a uh, for a parking variance. Um, and I believe we are, uh, we're providing eighty-seven spaces and I think the uh, a hundred and twenty-five is the uh, is the required amount. Um, can you, can you tell me, on average, how many employees do you have on the site at any given time?
Uh, probably onsite, on a typical day, there's probably forty-five or so, I would say. Um, since we're a construction company, you know, most of the people, the people who are in the office are, you know. Project managers, accounting department, estimators, superintendents, so since all our projects are all over the place, um. There's never everyone there on one day and on a typical, if everyone showed up for a holiday party, we're about sixty-five people, let's say.
Okay, so would you say the eighty-seven spaces that you have, uh, that is being provided is more than adequate for your uh, for your uses?
Yes, it's more than enough.
Okay, and actually, it even has a a little bit of room to expand if your business grows in the future, is that correct?
Yes, I I don't think the business will, like, office-wise, will expand by a huge amount, I think the the. The warehouse expansion would allow us to add a few guys, but even that work would wouldn't be uh, consistent, it depends on what's going on in the. With our projects in the field and uh, there might be more of the guys there one day, a couple less another day, but. Typically, we'd probably still be in about that forty-five range.
Okay, um, and just because everybody, when they hear warehouse, there's certain bells that go off in their head, this isn't a distribution center of. Where like Amazon or FedEx where trucks are coming out or anything like that, okay, just wanted to make that clear for everybody.
No, I mean, basically, it's our, it's our, you know, tools, gang boxes, ladders, they kind of. Come in and then they go back out to the next project, I mean, sure, sometimes we receive deliveries there and then they get sent out to projects, but most of uh. Most of our work, most of the projects, most of our deliveries go directly to the projects.
Okay, uh, and now we're also asking for, uh, actually, the majority of our variances are are related to the solar arrays. And we'll get into some more technical stuff with the engineering, but just in general, um, why is it that you want to put the solar arrays on the site?
Um, we do some solar work, like solar installations, like really large-scale commercial installations. And we just thought, you know, with with doing this, we would ask, uh, you know, to look at a solar carport over a lot of the, like. A couple of the main row of the parking, we thought that would be a nice benefit to the open space, a nice benefit for the employees, I used to work somewhere else that. Um, had that and those were the most desirable parking spaces, you're out of the sun and snow and rain and all that, so. We thought that would be a good uh, a good use of the space and and that's why we're asking, I mean, we thought, we thought while we were asking, we would try to maximize. What we could do on site, um, and yeah, I mean, that that's really it, we thought it's a good uh, green use and and. Hopefully would make the site a little nicer and maybe a little um, more efficient.
Perfect, okay, let's briefly go over the reports, I have Mister uh, Hinterstein's report and Mister Chadwick's report, um. Uh, in general, I'm just gonna ask you a general question, can we uh, agree to comply with all of the comments that are in this report?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, um, now, just to get a little bit more uh, uh, on some of these, um, the specifics, I think one of the things that was asking is. Will we uh, uh, be putting in any make-ready EV vehicle parking spaces? And is it true that we're happy to work with the town to to put in the spaces and and to figure out where they're gonna go on the site plan, is that correct?
Sure, yes, we would.
And um, I believe one of the other ones we were talking about is uh, on four on Mister Hinterstein's report. He indicates that there were two sheds located on the property, can you shed some light? That's a bad pun, can you please let us let us know what those sheds are for, if they're there, if they're staying or if they're even still there?
Oh, the two sheds, there's two um, like, small typical home sheds, those are, those were just delivered to our property and they're going. Uh, out to a job site, those are gonna be used for um, to kind of house a temporary electrical service, so it's out of the the weather while we're doing. You know, often you have to provide tempo temporary electrical service to a job site and the. The temporary service will be in there just to keep it out of the weather, so both of those should be, they should be out of here soon.
Okay, so they're gonna be off-site and we're not, we're not uh, uh, proposing to keep them as permanent structures or anything?
Definitely not.
Um. Um, mo- there are multiple comments uh, that refer to landscaping and screening, uh, we have a a fairly large area. Um, that's green right now, but really doesn't have very much landscaping. Um, would it be safe to say that we are happy to work with Mister Hinterstein and the town to develop a comprehensive landscaping plan? That addresses all those concerns, uh, instead of going through each one individually, we're perfectly happy to do that?
Sure, yeah, we definitely work, we try to work with the town and figure it out, absolutely.
And those, and then we can certainly do that, that's actually a condition of the uh, approval that we work with Henry to work out a comprehensive landscaping scheme.
Okay, yes.
Okay, um. And I think those are the only ones that we really, oh, and the the last one that I think, just for some clarification, there was some indication that there's a uh, one-way. Or a road that isn't uh, wide enough for two-way traffic coming off of New England Avenue, uh, and it's being suggested that we uh, that we. Um. Uh, sorry, stripe, uh, stripe or sign that as a one-way, you have no issue with that, correct?
No.
And it's actually already a one-way and I think there's a sign.
I think it is, I think there's a sign there now, I think it maybe it's just turned around on one of the posts.
Perfect, um, I have no other uh, direct questions of uh, Mister Welsh, if any of the board members do.
Uh, any members of the board have any questions? Uh, well, Henry, let me ask you, uh, having gone through the site impact and they're agreeing to mostly everything, any other issues, parking?
The really only other issues, um, and and due to the fact that the severity of the parking variance is what it is. Uh, it is rather severe of a variance, uh, and there is quite a bit of of excess space on the site that could accommodate parking. Uh, if it were ever needed, uh, I totally feel like the site currently, I'm in agreement with Mister Welsh that. The site has adequate parking most likely for uh, the the current use and even the the use with the addition. Uh, but since you have the space there, uh, it'd be nice to see some of that, like, parking land bank just. To show that you have the room, whether it be twenty spaces, twenty-five spaces, land bank it and said, hey. Whatever becomes a problem, we're showing you that it it can be done, obviously, they're land bank, they don't have to be constructed, but it just. It goes towards that variance and we could say, hey, we're land banking twenty, twenty-five spaces, now the variance is really only. You know, one twenty-five versus, you know, a hundred and two or whatever the case may be, or a hundred and twelve. It's it's a much less variance and it it shows that the site could accommodate more parking if it were ever necessary.
Yeah, I guess the 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 first time I heard that term was today, um, so uh. I guess we really just haven't considered it that well, like, where it would go with, um, you know, the engineers and trying to figure it out and maybe what's underground and and.
And Mister Welsh, if if I actually could. Yeah, if I could interrupt you for a second, and and I think, Henry, I think that that is, that certainly sounds like a reasonable request, the issue that I have. Is that if we, um, and especially. You know, obviously, this is the first time today that that we're hearing about the land banking, the issue is, is that you then have to, you then have to include that in the variance. Uh, as uh, in terms of the parking variance, but that also could trigger additional variances, depending on where that land bank is on the site. And it and I believe it puts us into a major category when it comes into uh, to potential land disturbance. So, I think that, I think that puts us, my my fear is that it 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 has a snowball effect that then would start a whole bunch of unanticipated. Issues, which.
I think, I think what we could do is we could say that, we could, I think, denote an area. That land bank parking could potentially be added if necessary, but that it would require you to come back to the board. Uh, for the, the approval of the site plan aspect of it, um, so that it's not. Right now, looked upon, I think, as a major or, you know, you adding over, you know, a certain amount of impervious. Uh, I I think it could be done, maybe Mister Keneely could elaborate, um, Jim, if if, for, even though it. Would affect the va- Um Jim, if if for even though it would affect the variance, to say it's land banked. We've done it in ways where people have come in here with the full blown design for land bank parking and said, hey, if we need it. All we need to do is tell you, we're gonna, we're gonna build it. Bond for it inspection fees and go because it was shown on the plan. But if it's strictly a dash line, it says potential future space area or parking area. I think we could say that, yeah, it it goes towards the variance, but we're not giving you. Uh, you know, if it were having to have to be built, you would have to come back and this way.
Approval for the land bank parking. If that's ever necessary in the future, they would have to come back to the board with a site plan application.
Right. So your your variants would be, you know, um less severe, but it wouldn't impact now.
Can I make a suggestion and only because a again, I'm just, I'm I'm trying to think like a lawyer in a paranoid mode. Can I make a suggestion that we will agree to work with the township to designate a land banked parking area? If it can be done without detriment to the existing. Uh existing approvals. And and again, the the reason, the reason that I'm concerned about it is is again, I think that technically. We would have to know the number of of parking spaces that we're land banking to then factor into what the variance is that the board is granting. And then and we need to know where it's located to see if that triggers setback variances. And again, the bigger issue I think is that is that if it triggers then it as a major uh uh application. As opposed to saying on a a a minor application, that is, that has, I think, some real legal consequences behind it. Um and if anybody were to ever challenge the approval on that basis, there might be a basis to challenge that, and that's what I'm concerned about. I I I certainly agree with you that I think there's enough, I I think there there might be ways to do it. And there is a large area. Um quite frankly, I think this board generally prefers to see not large expanses of parking. But likes to see, you know, landscaping and green space, which is what we are providing. Uh and I I I I just don't want to. And and again, I don't think it's the intention of the board to to cause a snowball effect to have us come back. But I will note that, you know, we I recently had an application where there was a request to place a, you know, place a shed or a garage. On a property that then caused us to have to come back to the board again because there was coverage issues that were triggered by the placement of the garage. So that we had to come back to the board for another application because you can't anticipate what. The potential consequences of that are unless we actually see where it is. So again, it might be me being overly paranoid or overly um cautious. But quite frankly, that's what my client is paying me to do.
I I don't think any of those issues are going to arise until you come back for a site plan approval for that banked land bank parking. And then you have to evaluate that.
I thought he was suggesting that we simply write a note. On the site plan, so it's there, it's by the town's record. If. Uh additional parking is required, land bank parking was, it was contemplated for this site and would be a site plan application. Something like that, that isn't gonna trigger anything.
And Mr. Arch, I could be as little as, you know, I think if you got this to a hundred spaces, so land bank thirteen. You're you're at a hundred versus one twenty five. I I think that gets you to, you know. The a a little bit more reasonable number with that variance. And again, I I don't think it's, you see, you know how large this site is and there's a lot of space there. I I don't see any way that you wouldn't be able to fit thirteen spaces somewhere on that site. And and again, um. That could be figured out somewhere down the line. It would not be something that would have to be done now.
Correct, and that's why maybe maybe my suggestion, maybe this is something that maybe Mr. Caneely and I can work out. Um uh in terms of what the language would be after after maybe having an opportunity to discuss the engineering. If there is any engineering consequences and then see if there is anything that's gonna be triggered. I just, I I just don't know. It's a question mark in my mind. And I'm hesitant to agree to more than just saying that we will make our best efforts to 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 do that. But I I I I can't bind my client to something that might have unforeseen consequences. So I I just want to make sure that 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 is noted.
Duly noted. Jim, we can work with the language you you mentioned. Yes, I'm sure Mr. Arch and I can work it out. Okay, fair enough. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Welsh? Any comments? Henry, now put on your next witness, Mr. Arch.
Uh thank you. Uh our next witness is uh Mr. Robert Murray, who I believe is present.
Mr. Murray, are you present?
Yes.
Mr. Murray, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give is to the truth.
I do.
Uh so uh Mr. Murray, you are a uh licensed engineer, is that correct?
Correct, for a year and a half now.
Okay, uh and if you can, I don't believe you've ever been accepted uh by this board, so if you can, if you can please go through your uh your education and your credentials.
Sure, I graduated in two thousand seventeen from Stevens Institute Technology. I've been a uh P E for a year and a half now. And I worked for Menlo Engineering for about five years at two sixty one Cleveland Avenue Highland Park.
His credentials are fine, please proceed.
Okay, um so uh Mr. Murray, you are familiar with the uh with the site and the proposed plans, correct?
Correct.
Okay, if you would, if you can please just take us through um sort of a general overview of the site and if you're gonna touch upon the uh the areas where we're requesting variances.
I would like to present exhibit A one, existing conditions exhibit. The site, the applicant is looking to develop is lot four of block four, four forty six oh one. In the township of Tiscataway. It is located on the northwest corner of the intersection between New England Avenue and Centennial Avenue. The site has two existing access points, one which is a right in, right out on Centennial Avenue. And one with, which is a full movement on uh New England Avenue. The site is approximately five acres is and is located in the L I five zone. Surrounding the site to the north, east and west are all industrial properties. And to the south past Centennial Avenue is Woodlands. The site today is a industrial manufacturing building, which is approximately thirty six thousand seven hundred fifty three square feet. It has eighty nine parking spaces. I would, um it also has three berths, uh loading berths, two on the west or east side and one on the west side. I would like to move on to exhibit eight two. To talk about the proposed uh improvements. We are proposing a five thousand nine hundred eighty five square foot building addition. Along with sidewalk along the frontages of New England and Centennial Avenue. As well as some regrading and restriping along the west side of the building to improve the parking uh to be ADA compliant. The site also. Um the proposed conditions in the site also ask for four solar arrays. In two sets. One, which is the carports, as talked about, will be fourteen and a half feet high. The other set in the grass areas will have a total height of eight foot, four inches. The and the proposed conditions, there are eighty seven parking spaces. The reduction in the parking spaces include one for the trash enclosure, trash enclosure fenced in on the north side of the building. And two, one was lost to become ADA compliant on the west side of the building. Variances, as discussed, include the parking variance. Where where we are at eighty seven. Where one hundred and twenty five is required. The height of the ground array, ground arrays at the carport at fourteen and a half where ten feet are required. The side yard setback for the. Uh ground array to the north, which is thirty four point six feet from the side yard where fifty is required. And landscaping the solar arrays, which we are willing to work with the board's professionals. To satisfy satisfy their comments. This concludes uh my testimony.
Okay, thank you. Uh Mr. Murray, if I can just ask, you've looked over the reports, correct?
Yes.
And in regard to any of the engineering or any of the uh technical comments about revisions or notes. Uh you agree that we will comply with all of those requests, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, um I have no further questions. Uh oh, actually, wait, no, sorry, one for the question. Uh you had indicated the uh the ground arrays um in the parking uh would be uh approximately uh fourteen and a half feet, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and the reason uh is it is it correct that the reason for that is because we need to provide enough clearance for vehicles, especially emergency vehicles? Uh so that they can freely move amongst the uh the the parking areas without clipping solar panels essentially, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's it's really a a safety concern is what we're asking for for that that height of variance of over ten feet. Uh because that just wouldn't be adequate to clear all the vehicles, correct?
Correct.
Okay, uh that concludes my direct.
Any other members of the board have any questions from Mr. Murray? Henry?
Yeah, Mr. Murray, um on the carport uh solar structure, so fourteen and a half, that's on the high end. I imagine there's a low end to that as well.
Correct, on the low end, it's about ten feet uh towards the face of the car parking. Towards the the edge of pavement.
Right, so that's more on the the lawn sides, the high sides would be uh the sides that are, I guess, facing south or west, correct?
The side, the high sides are on the north, northern carport is to the south of it and the high side for the west is on the. All right, on the east side of it.
Okay.
Any other members of the board have any questions? Any comments? Nothing? All right, Mr. March, having uh pretty much appeased us with the uh site impact and agreeing to everything. I would hope to get the Reader's Digest version of your next witness and some closing statements.
Uh I I certainly understand. Uh our next witness, and if I could just ask Mr. Murray to stop sharing the screen. Our next witness is uh going to be our planner, which is John Leon Cavallo. Who I believe is actually present there with Mr. Murray, so we'll just do a quick swap.
Can I interrupt one quickly? Are these the non-glare panels or are they gonna reflect?
Is it uh non-glare panels or are they reflecting?
Um I'm not aware of either either one, but we can um comply with the comments. That do not create glare to the neighboring comments, uh neighboring sites.
If I if I remember the ordinance correctly, I believe the ordinance calls for non-glare. If I remember reading that, I'm I'm not.
I don't remember reading it, that's why I raised the question. Because we've had that discussion on other applications for solar.
Well, maybe your ordinance should say not.
Non, non glare causing to the neighboring properties.
Yeah.
Someone says.
I'm pretty sure, yes.
You'll go black.
We certainly will.
Thank you, John. Mr. Leon Cavallo, could you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony about the gives shall be the truth.
I do.
I believe Mr. Leon Cavallo has been accepted by this board as a professional planner in prior applications. Agreed, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, okay, uh. I think I can do this quickly uh for the attorney. We have a a a tax lot here of one tax lot. Uh it's for uh solar electric. Um as we said, solar electric is a longstanding business uh in the community, providing jobs and important electrical services. It's critical with uh clients such as P S E N G. Uh and they're there to uh ensure no uh disruption in power and communications. The surrounding area, uh as our engineer has said, uh is industrial, it's three sides with one wooded side. Across from Centennial Avenue. Uh there are no residential uh uses uh anywhere in the in close proximity and uh none within earshot of the facility. Uh we will construct, as we said, a six thousand square foot, approximately six thousand square foot building and four new ground mounted solar arrays. The uh zone that the property is in is in the light industrial zone. Uh purpose of the zone is to reflect existing indu- industries and promote non hazardous operations. permitted uses are warehouses, manufacturing uses, research labs, government uses and uh public uses. Uh zone conformance, uh the existing uh uses uh permitted and right on on uh Q and. On uh on point uh with the in uh the zone intent uh for non hazardous operations. Uh the bulk requirements are substantially met, lot then dimensions, height and coverage and all setbacks are met. Uh the zone relief, as we talked about, is a D three conditional uh relief uh. Uh required for uh a few re- uh requirements related to the solar array and not the addition. There's nothing we need for the addition in terms of variances. Seavery for parking uh has been discussed. And the supply, as I can see it, uh in my opinion, is well above the demand at a peak uh shifts. As the president of the company has talked about. Justifications of the D three conditional use uh relief are the D three satisfies the statutory criteria. Under the Coventry Square case in uh state, uh New Jersey state law, Coventry is more relaxed. Standard of proof uh than Medici standard for prohibited use. Per Coventry, the focus is not on the use per se, uh but rather on the intent of the conditions. Uh the positive criteria in this application for the conditional use, the positive criteria are presumably uh met. Uh because the use itself is not an issue, it's been there for more than twenty years. Uh notwithstanding the above solar array is an inherently beneficial use and promotes renewable energy. Also, the uh project enhance enhances the established uh businesses uh and the business on site. Uh and it's a permitted uh use committed to the community. Uh the project also uh as a whole will result in uh improved operational efficiencies. As the president have mentioned, for a very important business, which is almost an essential business of sorts. Uh for safety and and uh uh continuance of power throughout the uh the region. It's critical that uh this business pro- uh provide timely service to ensure power supply uh and communications. All the above municipal land use, municipal uh fundamental purposes of zoning. Uh include A, C, G, H, I, M and N under the municipal land use law. Uh some of those are promote general welfare and the one that's to the point, right to point again is. Uh uh to uh promote renewable energy resources. The negative criteria, none of the conditional uses, uh the deviations of the uses will. Uh cause impact to the substantial adverse of a substantial adverse nature. Uh solar array setback uh is thirty four point six degrees uh or feet versus fifty feet. Adjacent uses in uh is in the industrial, uh the building is about uh eighty feet away from others. And that building has uh no essential windows. Uh solar array uh height of ten feet uh as well setback from the road. Uh not overpowering and is uh necessary for clearance. Uh uh because of emergency vehicles that might use uh that uh element of the site. Solar array support structures, a structures height in the parking lot uh is over ten feet. Uh and again, uh it's not overpowering and it's needed for clearance uh for uh different uh emergency uses. Solar erase uh screening is is none. We will work, as you've heard from the uh both the uh. Uh the president of the company and the engineer on jo- on the job uh that uh. Uh it will uh work with your staff uh to come up with the proper uh screening for that area. Uh all uh potential impacts have been addressed, including glare, security, electric shock and fire. Uh and uh appropriate safeguards will be put in place in accordance with the uh with uh New Jersey state law. Uh such as signage and with the uh uh township requirements. Uh, such as signage and with the, uh, uh, township requirements. Justification for the sea variant, uh, sea parking variance, uh, is that it will be justified under the flexible sea. Uh, balancing test and once that is done, it will show that, uh, there is no substantial, uh, detriment. And, uh, the application, uh, the benefits of the application, uh, will substantially outweigh any detriments in accordance with state law. Uh, public benefits for, uh, project, uh, positives that were stated before will carry forth. Uh, from here and continuing parking relief is necessary to effectuate a good project. Uh, only eighty-nine spaces now works fine, so the deletion of two, uh, will still work, uh, for the application. Uh, for the foreseeable future. Potential detriments, uh, there aren't very many, the real-world proof of the parking, uh, is in the pudding, the attic, uh, and it is adequate. Uh, there is no problem with the current supply and it's a comfortable relationship, uh, with the site plan. Uh, the parking demand associates associated with the, uh, building addition is insignificant, uh, and they're very small. And, uh, don't amount to very much. The operational testimony is that the current parking supply is more adequate, uh, for a peak demand, uh, which I concur with also. Additional parking would be unnecessary, uh, it would not serve any practical planning purpose. Uh, and, uh, we can work something out with the, uh, future, uh, bank parking, uh, with some leadership. Or, uh, uh, by the, uh, attorneys that are involved with the case. In conclusion, our, uh, the courts have found modernization of industrial facilities is a special reason to support such variances. Uh, the positive is a, uh, the project is a positive investment, uh, in the, uh, established permitted business use, use here. Uh, with minimal, if any, real impacts. Statutory tests of all the relief is met and approval is respectfully warranted. And I would, uh, ask that you approve this application for both preliminary and final site plan, uh, and the variances involved, uh, tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I believe that sums it up better than I can, so that is our presentation.
Uh, Mr. Arch, two, two notes, uh, I believe that there's an indication that there are two containers in the parking lot. Um, and there's some outdoor storage of materials in addition to the, that we already discussed. Uh, I guess, Mr. Welsh, to comment upon those and whether or not they can be removed.
Uh, yeah, well, that, that's part of what we tried to create a little extra space to, um. To, to be able to facilitate doing some of that stuff currently in our, in our warehouse, um, um, so that's some of, uh. You know, those are tools that come and go, um, those are things that we've done that would be gone if, if we did the, uh, the expansion.
So expansions granted, they will be, uh, they will be removed and moved inside to the expansion, correct?
Yes.
Excellent.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Welsh, Mr. Arch, any other members of the board have any questions for this application or any comments? Hearing none, I'm going to open it to the public, anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application? Ms. Buckley?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, I'm going to close the public portion and I'm going to make a motion to approve this application. Steve Weissman will second it. Colorado?
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tilley?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio? Mr. Blount?
Yes.
So Heydaka?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes. Mr. Arch, we will memorialize this at our next meeting.
Thank you very much, can we have an extra sign too, is that okay?
They're on sale tonight. I like your planner, I would hate to see with the long version of his testimony. Have a good night, gentlemen.
Thank you, have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Move on to item number eleven, adoption of resolutions from the regular meeting of October thirteenth. The first resolution is Ronaldo Peraza, this application was approved, Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Yes. Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Next resolution, new singular wireless for a site plan exemption, Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Heyduka?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Last resolution, Sadaf Ayub Khalid, Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tilley?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Heyduka?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
The four resolutions that I have to choose. Let's move on to item number twelve, adoption of minutes from the regular meeting of October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All opposed? All right, okay, item number thirteenth, adjournment, thank you all as always for your dedication to the township. And, uh, happy Halloween.